Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the February 26, 2024 School Board Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Maggie, could you please call the roll?
Lindsey Neede, here.
Maggie Smith, here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Bunch.
Here.
Crystal Lee.
Excused.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Khadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
With seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved?
Second.
Maggie?
A second. To approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. All right, we have a special guest here this evening. Each year, the school district of Holman invites local lawmakers to attend a board meeting to provide an update on legislation impacting public education and their thoughts. I would like to welcome State Senator Brad Pfaff to the presenter's table.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity and thank you for the work that you do and thank you for all those that are in attendance and those that are listening in. My name is Brad Pfaff. It is an honor to represent you and your family in the Wisconsin State Senate. I come before you to share a brief update on some of the things that have happened in the state legislature and some that are currently in the works. First of all, I do want to share with you the 2023-2025 biennial budget, which passed last June, did include $1.2 billion in increased state funding for education. That proposal does continue, making sure that Wisconsin provides at least two-thirds funding for our education. Right now, we're at a little over 68%. That proposal included a $325 per pupil increase. It also, we did see an increase when it came to special education funding. The state of Wisconsin right now is providing 33% for special education funding. I think we all recognize the fact the state can do a lot better than that. And I just want to be on record saying that, you know, while this proposal was signed into law by the governor, I did believe that we could have done better. And I did vote against this measure. But I wanted to bring before you, to let you know that I strongly believe that as a state, we need to continue to invest in our public education system. I do believe that the state of Wisconsin needs to recognize the fact that our best economic development tool we have as a state is making sure that we invest all of our state's children and all of our state's citizens. And that is why making sure that we have a strong and robust public education system and a public financing system for that education system is paramount to all of us. I will also share with you the fact that there was an increased dollar amount for student mental health, the tune of $30 million. That is much-needed investment, but I think all of you can recognize the fact that sadly, more is needed. We in the state of Wisconsin, like most other states, are experiencing a mental health crisis. And it has impacted individuals and families of all ages and all demographics. And I am glad that we recognize the fact that we need to continue to invest in mental health, student mental health, but I do believe more work can be done. I want to briefly share with you some of the work that still needs to be done within the Wisconsin State Legislature before we do adjourn. Now, I want to share with you that the Wisconsin State Assembly has already adjourned, but it is my belief that their work is not done and they will be back. Because the work that still needs to be done includes making sure that we move forward on some childcare initiatives. Real briefly, the economics of childcare in this state does not work for the simple reason of this. Childcare costs too much for working families. The average cost of childcare in Wisconsin is as much as one year of tuition at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, which is over $11,000 a year. However, while parents are paying that type of price, on average, childcare providers, their margin is paper-thin. If they seek to bring in additional children, there's a limit on how much one individual is able to do, a number of children. They bring in additional assistance, obviously, we all recognize the pressures as far as within the economy, trying to find workers and the pay that one would have to compensate that employee in order to be competitive in the market. It just isn't working. So thus, while parents are paying too much, providers are not being able to make ends meet and those that work within the industry, you know, are not making what they could make down the street, working at another location. So what do we do? Obviously, we need to continue to build on a public-private partnership. And there are a variety of different efforts that are taking place. Some are taking place within the business sector, some are taking place within schools, others are taking place with a public-private partnership where there has been, you know, taxpayer assistance in order to assist businesses that have moved forward with providing childcare. Whatever the answer is, it's a series of answers in order to try and make sure that we do have affordable and accessible childcare for our working families. Because I think we all recognize the fact that in order for our economy to move forward, we need to get our workers in the workforce. In order to do that, we need to make sure that parents can feel confident and comfortable that their loved ones, their children, their kiddos are being well taken care of. Additional legislation that needs to be completed before the legislature adjourns is when it comes to water quality. And I know we're sitting here talking at a school board, but I will just say this, is that too many of our local residents that live in the town of Campbell have been drinking bottled water for the last four years. And we can do better as a society, we can do better as a state, to make sure that a forever chemical is removed from the water that people drink. And it is imperative that this work get done. And we have to move forward as a state and establish a groundwater standard. We have to move forward as a state to make sure that we got water quality monitoring, water quality testing. We must make sure that we move forward as a state to ensure that we never, ever have these forever chemicals in our water again. And so I'm going to continue to push forward and I'm working with my colleagues to make sure that the legislature does not adjourn before that gets done. I also want to share with you the fact that last Wednesday, I had the opportunity to spend the afternoon with Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction Superintendent, State Superintendent of Schools, Jill Underly. We were at the Wesby High School and we had the opportunity to tour that school and see all of the wonderful academic academies that are taking place within that school. And that is an example of the kind of innovation, creativity, and collective effort that's taking place within our public school system. And I know I've had the opportunity to join Governor Evers on the Holman School campus numerous times. I look forward to continuing to welcome him back to this wonderful school district, but I just want to say thank you to the work that you do. I strongly believe in public education. I am a proud graduate of public schools, from high school to college to graduate school. And I will work tirelessly to make sure that our public schools are well-respected and that our public schools have the resources that they need in order to keep going forward. And I want to do a shout-out to your academic staff and the people that work within your school district. They are top-notch and I personally appreciate the work that they do. My wife and I, our two children graduated from this school district and I greatly appreciate everything that this district has done for me and for my family and what it continues to do in this community. So I would be happy to take any questions that any of you may have. I just want to let you know that we're in this together. I realize that all of you are elected officials and you have to respond to the constituents of this district, but I want to let you know that you're not alone. You're not on an island and I will do my level best to make sure that I and my team in my office provide you with the information and the assistance so you can continue to do what you do well, and that is serve on this board, continue to be responsive to the people of this district, recognize the fact that we all want what's best for our children. We all want to make sure that, you know, our children receive a high-quality education. I know a lot of different opinions get brought forward and that's good, that's healthy. All I can say is that I appreciate the work that you do, know that you have a partner with me, and know that together, we will tell the story of public education, we will tell the story of the Holman School District, and we will be proud to make sure that we welcome students from all walks of life that enter these doors to make sure that they receive a high-quality public education that will prepare them for the future. Because that is what the taxpayers of this district expect. And I know, I know that your teachers and your academic and your faculty and the entire staff, they provide that every single day. So I say thank you. I do tip my hat to Administrator Miller for the excellent work that she does. I appreciate you being here and leading this great team and look forward to working with you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple. First, I'll just send the gratitude back your way for being a champion for public education. It's appreciated and I know it's a difficult climate, so thank you. And then particular thank you, two things that caught my eye, I think were Senate Bill 955 related to appropriations for the Office of School Safety.
Yes.
I can't believe we have to talk about.
I can't believe we got to talk about it either. This should be a no-brainer.
But thank you for the sponsorship on that one and for supporting 313, which I think was penalties for passing school buses.
Yes.
It's an issue.
That's right.
So I appreciate that. And then, not really questions, just remarks. I think about two things that seem unlikely to go anywhere this session, one being healthy school meals for all. I don't think that has been introduced as legislation since 2021-22, but would just, you know, I know it was removed from the governor's budget along with a stipulation that would have given reimbursement to locally sourced, locally grown producers, which is, in my opinion, unfortunate and healthy kids can't learn. So just would encourage support for healthy school meals, should it come back around next cycle. And then the other one, and again, personal opinion, background in public health, Healthy Youth Act was just reintroduced. That was the standard in the state of Wisconsin until 2009. It was repealed by the Walker Administration in 2011. And what that did is piecemeal the statute related to human growth and development. In my prior professional role, I saw the impact of that statute. Even when you read through it, you can tell it's been like cut and pasted a little bit. Like I think even the letters in the bulleted lists, they're not chronological. And what it's done is create a lot of confusion for school districts around the state where they're not clear that they can teach above the statute. It names things, it talks about abstinence until marriage, it talks about shaken baby syndrome, it talks about STIs, and yet it doesn't say anything about talking about contraception, violence prevention, healthy relationships. So it, in my opinion, could use some work. Healthy Youth Act is that work and I don't think it'll go anywhere right now, but would encourage support for that if it comes through again. And would also just uplift, again, former professional role. There's forthcoming research from a representative sample of Wisconsin parents of school-aged kids that really shows across the political spectrum, support for comprehensive sex ed specific to categories. And I'll just say, I would be happy to share that when it's published and to support that moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you for it. I appreciate it. Follow-up real quickly. The Office of School Safety is a no-brainer and I cannot believe that we haven't been able to get this accomplished. This is something in which our local law enforcement have been very clear in their support for this. So I've been working with Wisconsin's Attorney General Josh Call to make sure that there is adequate funding within the Wisconsin Office of School Safety. So if, largely it has to do with making sure that we've got a telephone, that someone picks up the phone, if a student or someone affiliated with a student recognizes that something may be off and that we need to make sure that the individuals within the school and that individual themselves, it may not be 100% themselves, that there are dollars available for law enforcement to be able to provide the assistance that's needed. I've been working with the La Crosse Police Chief, Sean Kundren, as well as others within the area on this. But for whatever reason, we received money from the federal government, the state of Wisconsin and the Walker Administration in 2017 moved forward with some dollars, but now it has been controversial. And I want to see this get done. I know the Attorney General does. There is some support with the majority party in the legislature to move forward with something not as comprehensive as what the Attorney General and I have been seeking. But again, it's something that I do believe we've got to get done. Healthy foods. Real quickly, this school district has a champion in Mike Gasper. I mean, that guy is awesome, what he does. I mean, he could run, I mean, people would line up to eat that food. It is just absolutely fantastic. So I will say this, I have a variety of different pieces of legislation on the local foods, school to farm to school, farm to cafeteria, a variety of different initiatives. I also have supported and continue to support breakfast and making sure that we have fully-funded school breakfast. Again, the majority legislature at this time has not funded all of those initiatives, but I will tell you this, is that I do believe the time is coming on that. I know that there's a linkage between full stomachs and education performance. I know that, you know that. I don't quite understand why a state like Wisconsin, which has on our license plates, America's dairyland, we feed this country, we feed this world. I think it only makes sense that, you know, we take that food and make sure that we've got the breakfast. And so I will continue to tell your story on that. And I look forward to getting more information and learning from you and regarding this other legislation, the Healthy Youth Act. I am not familiar with that entire initiative, so I look forward to learning about it. So thank you.
Yeah, I got a question on Act 20. So I know it's been in and out of the Assembly, the Senate, and parts of it are doing one thing and parts of it are doing another. Where does that stand in particular, especially with like the screener, with the limited amount of time that we have to put the screener together?
Exactly. So I wish I had greater information for you here on that. But before I walked in here, I had the opportunity to say hello to my wife and on the telephone. And she said, Brad, you better be ready for Act 20. I'm like, oh. So I bid your patience as I get you greater information in regards to it because there is a lot of back and forth that's taking place in regards to that. And that is a conversation that I and my team in my office are having with the State Superintendent's office as well in regards to Act 20. And so I ask if, to get back to you in regards to that, I will say this, is that the whole learning, phonics, it's a conversation. And I think we all recognize there's a lot of different thoughts on each side in regards to that and I look forward to talking to you more.
I think the biggest concern is just the limited amount of time that we have to put the stuff together.
I think you're right on that. I do think you're right. But I will also say that there was quite an interesting debate in regards to that topic before it was brought to the legislative floor and then it was signed into law by the governor. My office, I personally received a lot of comments from a lot of different reading specialists and educators in regards to various thoughts on which is most appropriate and how best students learn and making sure that the, you know, we reach the student the best way. So I will gladly get back to you on that. Thank you.
And then is there still a bill floating around regarding truancy and retention of kids that are truant, I guess?
There's legislation. I don't know that number. I'm not specific on that legislation, but yes, there's always that. Yes, there's legislation. I don't know much more than that.
Yeah. Because I don't think the school district of Holman believes in the retention of the students and holding them back a grade.
Right. Yes. And in fact, I should know this because I just looked, yes, there is that, it's that specific. And so we'll follow up on that.
I guess for us, it's just a concern with how specific some of this legislation is getting and just the requirements it puts on us, how much we'd have to change process and internal things that happen. And with Act 20 even, we know, we love early literacy and we know what's coming forward is great, but it's just, there's so much man, it's, you know, mandate coming to us, which we didn't have planned funding for. So we're, as a school district, we're digging into our fund balance to fund these initiatives, which makes it challenging. And then having to ask our staff on short timelines to do things that really are impossible to do and it's just really hard.
It is.
As you're trying to keep a really positive environment and culture, so.
I hear you on that and I do give you credit for keeping a positive, doing your level best to keep a positive culture and positive attitude. I hear you on that. And there are, things are too prescriptive. I will be clear on that. You know, you are elected to be the local school board. I look to you for guidance and that's why I stated in my earlier comments, this is a partnership. You know, you were elected to be, represent the residents in this school district on this school board and, you know, you work hard for that position and I need to partner with you on this. So I look forward to having conversations about Act 20 and I look forward to having further conversations on greater, you know, what we can do to make sure that we partner and not just be so prescriptive on everything.
And I got one last one.
Yeah.
There was a 4K bill that I think stalled in the Assembly. And it was requiring school districts to use community centers in order to have their 4K, where their 4K students would reside instead of having our 4K students right here in our own public schools.
Yeah.
So that just adds a ton of complexities and funding issues and things like that.
It surely does.
So I saw that it stalled. I'm hoping it doesn't start back up again, but just to throw that out there as one.
Yeah, and I don't know who, I'm trying to better learn the motive behind that and what is, what's the reason for that? So I don't see that bill going anywhere this legislative session. However, I want to, I was surprised at that too. Let me just say that. I don't know what the reason for that legislation was.
I do have a quick question. I really appreciate everything that you've shared tonight and I was wondering if you could just expand really quickly and we're kind of getting into time, but on, you said Wesby does something really innovative.
Yeah. Well, they got it really. I'll just say this, I mean, I like my public, I like our schools. I am blessed to represent a district which I think is one of the greatest districts in the state of Wisconsin. It's most politically balanced as well, which I like because it keeps me on my toes. But we have an innovative school administrator there by the name of Steve Michaels and Steve and his team do a nice job and he has created some academies within his school. He's got a health science academy in which, you know, I believe it's the biology teacher has, you know, created kind of an academy and they're partnering with the Vernon Memorial Hospital and some health science education, which is kind of neat. We had the opportunity to learn from their, like Holman, they've got a number of different business clubs like DECA and FBLA and FFA and a number of different groups. And of course, they've been able to, you know, establish, you know, greater education when it comes to entrepreneurship and financial lending and financial literacy. You're doing many of these same things. I just find that, you know, I love that. I absolutely love that. I'm showing my age here, but in the 80s, when I graduated from high school, wonderful, but you know, it's, education continues to evolve. And I love that. I love that, how these districts are being responsive to their local community needs, but also are being very forward-looking. I love that. I think it's fantastic. And so they have a partnership with Western Technical College when it comes to some technical education and I know this school does as well. So there's a lot of neat things that are happening within our K-12 system here in this area. And it was great to have the State Superintendent in this side of the state. I welcome her back. I hope she can come visit here at Holman soon. I know we've had the opportunity to have the governor here a couple times, as well as other cabinet secretaries, our Agriculture Secretary in the state to talk about healthy foods. So we'll continue to do that. But again, I think I really appreciate the creativity and the desire by our educators to make sure that the curriculum that they offer is, you know, meets the needs of today's students. I just think it's really cool and it was great to have the superintendent there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
One more.
Oh.
I have one more.
Yes, please.
Not getting off that easy.
Since the 1993 revenue limit legislation, did you know that 85% of the districts in this state have had to go to referendum? And we were just talking about all of the new requirements that we need to impose and no more money coming in. What not only can we do, but what can our communities do to let the legislature know? What can we do?
Well, thank you. I mean, I think that's, they're all excellent questions. That's excellent. I, I mean, you're not wrong. I mean, I was just talking about Wesby and they got an operating referendum. That's tough stuff. Not just buildings, you know, we're talking operating. They're very proud. They're very proud of what they do every single day, like all of you are. Thing is, I will say this, you need to continue to do what you're doing, tell your story and be as creative and innovative as you can. I think this legislature, and I've been blunt, we had the most gerrymandered legislature in the nation. That's come to an end. The governor has signed new maps. You need to make sure you continue to hold these legislators accountable, me included. You have to hold these legislators accountable. We have to make sure that we continue to focus on the meat and potatoes that we need to do and that is to make sure that we educate all the students that walk through this door. And that's what we do. We educate all the students that walk through this door. And the thing is, is that, and stay focused on that and tell the positive stories that you're telling. But I will say this, is that I do, for the last 13 years, our maps have been gerrymandered in this state. And I think that that is, it's not right. And I think that it's. And I think that it's, it has led to some policies that I don't think are, been completely reflective by the majority of the people in this state. Now, having said that, as you rightly stated, it's been since 1993. I just said since 2011, it's been gerrymandered. But yes, there is a lot of competing pressures, a lot of competing pressures that have been brought forward. I do think that the, we have to continue to tell the story of public education. And I think that story has to be told in a lot of different ways. The fact that our public schools are open to all, that in fact that our public schools are the foundation, the center point of our communities. Our public schools are what bring people together. They don't divide us, they bring us together. I think that needs to be told. I do think the partnerships, and that's why I like these academies or whatever we want to call them, these partnerships with the private sector as far as working on skills based training. I think that is all extremely important. And we do need to make sure we continue to build on that and ask for their assistance in telling the story. I think all of that is, is there. But I think at the end of the day, it is going to be the will of the legislature. And that legislature has to be reflective of the people of the state. And it has to be. And so, you know, I, I will be the first to admit that, you know, education is continuously changing and there's constant demands are being brought forward, forward to districts like this and to individual teachers. And, but the thing is, is that I still think this is the, public education is the, is the centerpiece of civic society and it is a centerpiece of a strong and robust democracy. And we gotta continue to advocate for it. But, you know, I, I realize that the resources are tight. I real, realize that the demands are constant and that I realize that there are political pressures coming from up above through mandates, but also the fact that you're all elected officials. I get that. And that's why I say we are partners and we have to figure out how to continue to partner, being responsive and being reflective of the needs of the community. But this is, you know, public education is something that we just gotta continue to advocate for and tell the story. And, you know, I know I didn't answer your question directly, Barb, but all I can tell you is, is that we need you to continue to do what you do and ask legislators, keep people like myself and others keep saying, saying the same thing. But then back up, what's going on? The awards that this district has received and, you know, some of the accomplishments of the graduates and the work that is done. I firmly believe people move to this community because they want to have their kids in this district. I firmly believe the fact that, you know, this is a district that other districts look to and want to emulate. And I think that's good. I think it's great. So we, but the more work needs to be done, without a doubt, without a doubt. And I could tell you this, I know that the governor's heard this from me over and over. And, but we just need to make sure that, that we hold, to hold these legislators accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate this for the opportunity. Keep up the great work. Go Vikings. See you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Pab.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to the district administrators' report, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah. So our students are wrapping up a successful winter co-curricular season. We had 10 wrestlers compete at the individual state tournament this past weekend and three of them earned a medal. We had Turner Campbell, who got fifth place, Preston Cradaville got fifth place, and Caitlin Lambreeze got sixth place. Our girls and boys hockey wrapped up their season at the regional level in the playoffs. And the boys wrestling team ended their season at the sectional final. It was an exciting match there. We had girls basketball that finished their season at their regionals this last weekend. And we have also, our gymnastics had their performance and Katie Lang is advancing to the state for the uneven bars and floor exercises. So congratulations to all of our teams and wish those well that are continuing on. And we look forward to the spring season to start. On the arts side, we had 104 students advancing to state solo and ensemble competition. So our, our singers and our, our band and our ensembles, they, I was there and saw fantastic performances. We're very excited for them. So they'll be performing down at UWL on May 4th. And then congratulations, we have our Holman Middle School students, Iris and Leanna, who are both placed in the top five of the regional spelling bee and they'll be advancing to the state spelling bee on Saturday, March 16th in Madison. So lots of great successes going on. And then just a reminder of our school board candidate forum is on the evening of Monday, March 18th at 7:00 PM. It'll be livestreamed or people are welcome to come see it live in our boardroom. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah. Next week is our National School Breakfast Week. Once again, just thank you to our nutrition services staff for the, well, in Holman, that equals nearly 150,000 breakfasts or meals are, were served during the 22, 23 school year. So just the breakfast program is very large and we just thank the nutrition services team and staff for their dedication to making sure our students start the day right and that. Many of us will be serving breakfast to the students. So they'll get to see and we'll be inviting some of our local heroes in too, to help out. So we're excited for that. And then just another shout out to Holman Middle School and congratulations to Mr. Vogler and Ms. Thompson, Mr. Taschner and their team and all the staff over there for all their hard work and their recognition of a 2024 model PLC school. That's, was a lot of hard work, many years, and it's great to see data and academic data in improving over those years to get that distinguished honor. So congratulations to that team. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to reports and discussion, I welcome Dr. Mueller and the elementary principals to the presenter's table to discuss elementary playground plans.
Yeah, they don't need me. They're going to do a great job sharing their playgrounds. So this is one part of our 2022 referendum was the improvement of our playgrounds to make them more inclusive. So tonight, our elementary principals will each give a overview of the, oh, it was all set for you there. We'll give an overview of each of their playgrounds in the different.
Is the link on there?
There we go.
Good evening. My name's Nick Weber. I'm the principal at Prairie View and I'll get us started tonight. So first of all, thank you to our community for obviously supporting the referendum and you as the board who represent our community. Thank you. Just want, wanted to say upfront that appreciate that playgrounds weren't left as an afterthought. As you all know and we know in education, especially at the elementary level, play is essential when we talk about child development. So those opportunities that the playground provides is part of the education, especially when we believe in whole child. So I think it's really important that you recognize that playgrounds just weren't left for chance. So thank you on behalf of all of us for the upgrades and the planning for our playgrounds. I'm going to, I didn't prepare much, but you can see in front of you that really, when we talk about at least improvements at Prairie View, we were blessed with equipment that's really good, the foresight of playgrounds that are spaced out for age appropriate and a little bit of division there as well. But I'll just highlight a few of the upgrades. One thing not on here that I think's worth noting about safety is a, some of you have been out to the school and possibly even commented on the water collection area and that there is an offense near the school. And that's something that's been considered as part of this plan as well. So our supervision staff and I are really, really excited about that. But when you're, when you look over to the actual playground, really summing up the improvement I'm most excited about is accessibility for all students regardless of ability and having a surface that's more conducive for students of all abilities to access equipment and be with their grade level peers. So I'd say that, that is, that has to be the most exciting piece of this work. I guess, like I said, we're pretty fortunate to have what we have. You see the term Gaga. That is probably the most popular place on the playground if you ever come and visit us during the day at any point, most competitive, sometimes the best place to learn about conflict resolution. But those spaces are also being upgraded because they're played on so much, sometimes the, the ground is uneven. So the students will be excited to have an upgraded Gaga pit on the front and back. One thing that a couple of years ago, I had a group of students, fifth grade students petitioned me, had a lot of signatures on making sure we had hoops that were accessible for all heights and wanting 10-foot hoops on the playground as well as the shorter ones. So I'm happy to share that those students, although they're in middle school now, will be happy the legacy they're leaving on the basketball. So new surface for Gaga, accessible playground, sandbox enclosed, and the new 4K playground as you see there. And I believe the following slides are just a few images. You can see the darker green there. That represents the surface, the ground that would be more accessible for all students and all abilities. Any questions for Prairie View's upgrades?
No, looks good.
Thank you.
Well, like Nick shared, we're excited about this, thankful for the community support and the school board support as we've moved forward with our plans here at Sand Lake. As we're celebrating our 25th year, I've learned that's about the life expectancy of a playground. So that was something that I didn't know, but it's been great that that coincides with our referendum passage and being able to upgrade some of these areas. So Nick also mentioned really and articulated really well that this is a space where a lot of learning happens. And specifically, I would also highlight the Gaga ball pits. There is a lot of learning that occurs in those spaces, a great place to practice social emotional learning skills. We're so excited to be able to add Gaga ball pits. We'll have students of similar ages being able to play and compete against each other in those spaces. And then we have, if that's not your thing, if Gaga ball isn't where you want to be, some spaces where students can do some different activities, like playing in our new sandboxes and have just a variety of different things that they can participate in. And then another thing that we're adding to our younger area or our smaller playground is basketball hoops within that space. So that'll be nice to have. The kindergartners did not petition me, but I'm sure they'll appreciate that as well. The tan is what represents the poured in place surfacing on the Sand Lake equipment. And then this is a little darker. So for budgetary reasons and just trying to be as fiscally responsible as we can, you'll note that we have that surfacing up to surfaces. So a student can access any of this equipment via the surface area that poured in place surfacing. So we're able to make that whole playground accessible to students, which will be fantastic. Here's our K1 playground and then our, our 25 playground. We're adding swings with the kids are super excited, but there was one piece of equipment. Here they call it the spider web. I kind of call it the rocket ship that we're keeping in place because that's in great shapes. We're able to preserve that equipment while adding different structures to the rest of our 25 playground. So this'll come with a lot of land work too, which we're excited about getting some extra surfacing for our basketball hoops, moving some things around. And the, I don't think it shows in this picture, but in our K1 playground is notoriously warm during the April, May, June months. So we're adding some sun umbrellas to the playground, which our kids and staff are excited about to have a little shade.
Well, Matt and Nick made it easy for me, so I think I can simply say thank you to all of you and our community members who voted for this referendum. And again, also for including playgrounds in these upgrades and renovations. At Evergreen, we are super excited to add on and finish to what we started in recent years. So you may be aware, maybe not, that we have tried to kind of relocate our playground equipment so that we have a combined play space off the back corner of the building. And that is so we have the accessibility at all levels. Again, some of this planning was pre-referendum. However, for mentoring and just all sorts of reasons, we really like the centralized location of the play equipment. Number seven there was where our old lower playground equipment was, used to be. There's still a little bit of equipment there. That is going to be turned back into green space for a field. So at Evergreen, the layout was such that our kindergarten through fifth grade students would meet at a central location, the soccer field. And it wasn't necessarily appropriate that kindergartners and fifth graders were playing soccer together as far as safety goes. So we prefer the combined equipment that all ages can access and play on and separate field spaces for our youngers and olders. And so that's kind of the, you notice, we don't have the wings, of course, that Sand Lake and Prairie View have off of the building. So this is, this is Evergreen's design. Our swings are all being relocated and centrally located into that number one spot. We'll have added accessibility with swings, with additional poured in place surfacing, additional ramp access equipment and accessible sandbox. We'll have updated basketball hoops on both the upper and lower blacktop. And we will have official Gaga pits. So we had a homemade one from a community member that eventually fell apart this year. And so students will be so excited to have that back, not this coming year, but the following year. One other piece I'll note for Evergreen's playground is off of the upper blacktop, there will be a fence so that when receiving traffic or food service traffic is delivering, we will have a fence from the upper blacktop and where the students are playing and those deliveries are being made, which has never been the case. So we're super excited about that as well. Sure. One thing I'll note is the poured in place surfacing in all of our pictures is just for show. It's not necessarily purposely placed in these images. That's one of the pieces that Lee Recreation, the playground company, does because then they figure out what needs to be poured for the accessibility when the playground's installed.
All right. Here's Vikings. I think if 25 years is the limit, Vikings probably got that down for a new playground. So we are super excited that it's going to be relocated to the middle. Our playground's pretty far down right now, so it really makes supervision hard because they can be in the baseball fields and the soccer fields and the playground. So we're really excited to have it centralized. You can see right here where our buses will be, kind of be flip flops. Our buses will go right here. We'll still keep our basketball hoops. It'll just be on the other side. And then we'll have our parent drop off our staff parking lot. And then right here, kind of it will be easier to show some of the pictures with that. So we will have three essentially kind of playground designs. Our 4K playground that's on the side right now, that will be getting demolished. There's really nothing there they're going to keep, I don't believe, from that. Maybe that little climber, I think, might be the one thing they're keeping. But there'll be like three little sections, so our 4KK or any little ones, and then kind of move up. Obviously, kids can move through that, but just kind of age appropriate. And we have two new Gaga ball pits. So like Rachel, we had a PTO donate one. So it'll be really nice to have two brand new ones and just a really brand new playground. All the equipment is going away. So any questions on Viking? Kind of short and sweet because it's all new. And the last thing is just our timeline. So this June, Sand Lake and Prairie View and Viking. So this June, Sand Lake and Prairie View and Viking will kind of get their site prepped on. We're actually starting some at Viking over spring break, which is exciting, getting ready for our remodeling. And then this summer, everything will kind of get delivered and hopefully be set up at Sand Lake Prairie View and Viking and then next summer will be Evergreen's. So there's just our timeline. Any questions for any of us?
Any questions?
I'll just say thank you. I know a lot of thought and energy goes into all the plans and I think they're very fun and also really reflect positively on our buildings when people come to the district. And also, I picture my six-year-old who learns a lot of his social emotional lessons in the Gaga ball pit and he's going to be very excited that there's one at every school.
Yeah, it'll look really nice to have all new playgrounds at the school. So we appreciate that again and thank you guys for your support.
I would also say, I mean, just being a PTO member for years at Evergreen, the burden of having to like raise money to purchase playground equipment was so intense that it's going to be amazing for those PTOs to really like be able to spend their time and energy in fundraising on other, other projects that will really benefit our kids. I am really excited about this.
I, I just want to, before, sorry, before you go, I just want to acknowledge all the time our elementary principals have put into the plans for these playgrounds. It was multiple meetings over multiple times and getting input from the staff and then coming back again and again in that because it looks like, oh yeah, someone sent him a picture and here's the playground. And I just wanted to recognize that's not exactly how that goes, that, you know, in all of our referendum projects, it's like pretty much like every other week or every, really every other week, they are in meetings of some sort with a renovation or a project of this. So I just wanted to thank them for all their time that's above and beyond their just other daily duties that they, they do. So anyways.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, I'm good. Thank you. We found a applause for them.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be voted on separately? I would undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Motion by Chris.
Second, oh, sorry.
It's Barb. Second by Barb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments and committee reports you have. And tonight, we will start with Lindsay.
Yeah, tonight, we had the policy committee, we haven't had that in a while. So reviewed a lot of different policies on finance, student fees, fines, charges, a lot of policies on property and operations. There's a new policy out on fraud, if anyone's interested in that. It's good stuff. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Maggie.
I was going to say congratulations to the middle school team on their model PLC recognition. I also caught in one of our weekly updates that there was some work to make the high school graduation more inclusive, so was going to give kudos for that and as well as for school breakfast week and all of the effort that goes into school meals. And then I was also going to share that last week, I presented to the patch program, which has students from Holman, Analesca and La Crosse, learning leadership and advocacy skills. And I presented alongside Brad Corburg from the La Crosse Board and Tasha Marshick from the Analesca School Board and had just really great discussion with a group of teens about what school boards do and what they don't do and what it's like to run for office. It was a really great group of young people.
What's Patch do or stand for?
It stands for Providers and Teens Communicating for Health. So they really focus on teaching young people like how to schedule their own healthcare appointments and how do you communicate with a physician, how do you advocate for yourself, things like that.
All right, thank you. All right, Bridget.
I just wanted to say, it's been, there's been so many amazing things happening in our district, I haven't even been able to keep up on our Facebook page. It feels like every day, there's something amazing happening. But I see like our three middle school administrators are here and I just wanted to give a big shout out to like the National History Day projects because I've had two kids go through that and as much as a parent, it's super stressful. I cannot tell you how much my kids have benefited from the analytical and organizational skills that they've learned from that and I have one left next year. So again, it is just an amazing, amazing accomplishment of our school and all of your teachers are so incredible in the work that they put into that. So huge kudos and thank you.
All right, Barb.
Governor Evers has proclaimed this week to be Public Schools Week in the state of Wisconsin and so just a reminder at what?
You stole it from me.
Just to, you know, it's a good reminder of, you know, we need to be proud of what we are doing here in Holman.
All right.
Yeah, I don't think I have a whole lot to add on top of other folks, so I'll keep it short. Thank you to the elementary schools for presenting on those super cool playgrounds. I have nieces and goddaughters and I'm like, maybe we should take a tour of the school district and their playgrounds sometime. And thank you to Senator Brad Pfaff for stopping by and chatting with us. I think it is really important for us as school board members to recognize our distinct place in local politics and the ways that we can continue to support our community by being involved in those kinds of conversations. So I appreciate the access to that as well. That's all I got.
All right, thanks. And Chris.
I was going to second that with thanking Senator Pfaff for coming tonight for his insights and being a champion for public education because it is Public Education Week. And I just wanted to congratulate all the winter co-curriculars with their success this year, making it onto playoffs and they're advancing in their competitions. I just want to thank the principals, I know some of you know I have a little pet project to work on myself with the accessibility park and I know how much work goes into that. So I really appreciate the fact that you're adding Gaga pits to all of yours because ours does not have a Gaga pit on the one we're putting elsewhere in the community. And then lastly, tomorrow, the Adaptive Sparks League hockey team has their first playoff game, so if anybody wants to come out and check that out, it's a really good time. So it's 3:45 at the high school tomorrow.
Awesome. All right, yes, I wanted to also thank Senator Brad Pfaff for being here and providing his insights. I find, I find having our legislators here are being very valuable and I will also want to congratulate the Holman Middle School on being the 2024 model PLC at work school. I was able to attend the ceremony and saw the recognition and congratulations on that. And then just recognizing the National School Breakfast Week. All right, moving on to item 12.3, the board has been provided with notes from the January 8th, 2024 DEI committee meeting, please look those over. And then our upcoming board meeting schedule, we have a board workshop on March 6th at 5:00 PM. Then on March 11th, we have a DEI committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by a board meeting at 7:00. On March 18th, we have a policy committee meeting at 5:00 PM, followed by the candidate forum at 7:00. On March 20th, there's a wellness committee meeting at 3:30 and then April 2nd is the spring election. So we'll be moving into closed session this evening and I ask Board Clerk Maggie Smith to read the motion to move to closed session.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. In this case, the district administrators a valuation.
All right, so Maggie has moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris has second to move to closed session, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I ask Maggie Smith to take a roll call vote.
Lindsay, need?
Say yes.
Yes.
Maggie Smith, yes. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Yes.
Barb Wench.
Yes.
Jennifer Deek.
Yes.
Kadija Islam.
Yes.
Chris Lau.
Yes.
Congratulations on the grandbaby.